I'd like to call to order the January 16th meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education and welcome everyone that's here. I especially want to welcome Ethan from Troop 200. We're glad you're here. We always love to see Boy Scouts and children here that are learning more about the government and how things work. So, welcome. If you have any questions after the meeting, any of us will be glad to answer them. If we could all rise now, we're going to have Mr. Cleveland is going to do the invocation in pledge.
Please bow with me. Father, thank you for this evening and the beautiful day you've given us and thank you for this time we have together tonight to do your business and do businesses before this board. We pray we can lay aside all the things that are in our hearts and in our heads and all the troubles of our lives so that we can operate efficiently here for the people in this community. We thank you for all that you give us in this United States of America and thank you for those that protect those freedoms overseas and even here on this soil. We thank you for all the love you show us each day in your holy name we pray tonight. Amen. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, we have before us an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
A motion by Ann and a second by Kristen. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, and next we have approval of board roles and responsibilities. The attendance protocol committee. I think, Kristen, you did that last year?
Yep.
I think it's just one or two meetings a year. Nancy's...
I'd be happy to do it.
I make a motion for Nancy Roach to do that.
Second.
A motion by Ann and a second by Tom. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right, next we have the legislative liaison.
Make a motion that Kristen Morrissey be the liaison.
Okay. A motion by Ann for Kristen to be the liaison, a second by Nancy. All in...any discussion? All in favor? Okay, and then we have our officers for this year, our vice chairperson.
Make a motion Kristen Morrissey be our vice chairman.
And Ann makes a motion that Kristen Morrissey be the vice chairman.
Second.
A second by Tom. All in favor? Unanimous.
Make a motion that Darla White be chairman.
And Ann makes a motion that Darla White be chairman and Nancy seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, I got that out of the way. Thank you very much and I will try to do a good job. Next, we have our recognitions with our Reach Employee of the Month and our Superior Performance Spotlight.
Good afternoon. It's always a pleasure for us to be able to recognize folks in our district for the great things that they do. The Reach Employee of the Month is the only recognition we have other than our Superior Performance Spotlight, but the Reach Employee of the Month is a very important recognition for us in that these folks are recognized by their peers or the folks that they work with each and every day. So, to me, that makes it even more special. So, we had the Reach Employee of the Month for this month. I'd like to read a couple of the things that the folks said about them as they were nominating this person for this award. And I will tell you, it would take a long time to read all of them. As you can see, it's very fine print and it's two full pages of that, but I will just select two or three things to read to you this afternoon about this reach employee. This person is very supportive of her faculty and staff. She is quick to tell us we are doing a good job and to give us any support that we need. You can seldom find her in her office because she is always out and about in the building, talking to students, checking on teachers, and basically making sure she knows what's going on in the building. We never feel like we are being monitored, though we just feel like we have an administrator who likes to pop into classrooms and tell us what great things we are doing. Another person had this to say, it's really short, but it's very powerful in my opinion. She inspires me daily. And another person said she proves every day why she is an example of a great leader. She's not afraid to get down into the trenches with teachers and go the extra mile to ensure that every student gets everything they need. She not only makes sure the students have everything they need academically, but she makes sure they are clothed and fed outside of school. She will sit and read with the students who have become discouraged about their abilities to read well. She will talk with the little boy to find out what's going on that may be causing him to choose to make bad choices rather than just punishing or assuming he is a bad child. She makes me feel like I am the most important teacher to ever teach, but most of all, she is a friend to us and makes sure she knows what's going on in our busy lives despite her own even busier life. She is a true example of a great leader because she would never ask me to do anything that she would not do herself. And it is, again, a great privilege for us to recognize this hamper jar seat principal at Coming Elementary School as this month's Reach Employee.
You're both on campus missing.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm stunned. I don't know what to say. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Now, we all know behind every good principal is a very supportive family in itself, and I know that Merck she has family members here, so will you stand so we can thank you for supporting? Thank you very much. I'd also like to thank Jim and Nick. Jim and Nick sponsors the Reach Employee of the Month. At this time, I will ask Mitch Brotherton from Alamo Middle School, who's going to come forward to present the Superior Performance Spotlight.
Then they can speak to one audience. Start doing... Well, hi. I thought I was going to have to talk in my back to everybody, so this is nice. Yeah. This is perfect.
Well, then you're talking to us and they don't...
And then they can see in back. My name is Mitch Brotherton. I'm a teacher at Alamo Middle School. I teach sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. The class I'm going to talk about tonight, though, is a class that's taught exclusively to sixth and seventh graders. It's called Math Literacy. The class is a unique math class because I created it. I wrote the curriculum for it over the summer period. And it's unique because it's a math class, a math reading writing class, taught using the very popular game Minecraft. And I always say taught using the popular game Minecraft and I've yet to run into any student or adult that has not heard of Minecraft. It really is one of the most popular games out right now. It's for tablets, it's for systems, and it's for the computer. And it's a nine-week connection course. I teach Title I, Gifted, Regular Ed, Special Ed, so I've got all the learning levels in my classroom. And it's a project-based learning class. Over the nine-week course, we'll complete six to eight projects. And it covers reading and math standards. So, it's a nine-week course and the sixth-grade standards that I cover, if you'll excuse the formatting here, it's a little bit messed up, but you can see in math I cover one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. So, 10 math standards, and this is my sixth-grade curriculum here. And then for ELA, I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So, 10 math, seven ELA. And I always show my students this because without fail, when they find out that they're in a class where they use Minecraft, about three-fifths of the time in my classroom are Minecraft, I get the parent phone call saying, hey, this is great, I'm glad my student's having fun. What in the world are they using Minecraft in school for? So, I always show this as sort of like to cover myself here. I don't want to get in trouble for it. So, these are the standards that we cover and we delve pretty deep into some of them. Others, we just sort of skim the surface. So, let's skip all this. Let's show some of these. The way the projects work, like I said, there's between six and eight. Prior to every project, I have what I call a research phase, and the research phase is exactly like it sounds. I give my students some vocabulary words or sometimes I give them the standards themselves. You know, I tell them, these are those things that teachers always talk about that you may not have ever seen before, here they are. And I give them a word count and a picture count. And their job, these sixth and seventh-grade students, is to reach my word count and my picture count without plagiarizing or copy-pasting anything from Wikipedia or anything like that. So, it's a huge task for these sixth and seventh-grade students who have never really researched anything, much less exclusively math. And so, they research for a little bit. Once I'm pleased with their research and they've shown me they've done a good job, then they get to do the fun stuff, the Minecraft build. This video that I'm going to show you here is, it's actually, I took it today. It's my seventh graders. This is the third day of their project that focuses on mainly scale factor and dimensions, so one-dimensional, two-dimensional, three-dimensional, and scale factor. And if you look, this is Minecraft. Those of you that are not familiar with it, it's an entire game world made up of cubes. So, right there for the math people, a game world made up of cubes, you see volume, area perimeter, all that good stuff. And it's what's called a sandbox game in the literal sense that I give my students a completely blank world, they fill it up, just like you would imagine a sandbox. You can do whatever you want to the world. Well, my students can do whatever they want to this world, you know, provided they stay in my parameters. But I'll sort of explain some of this, what you're seeing here, because it does just look like a bunch of fun stuff, but there is math involved. So, if we look here, we have two-dimensional, and I know it's tough to see, there's a pyramid here that's two-dimensional and then the corresponding pyramid, which would be three-dimensional. Pretty basic stuff here, two-dimensional, three-dimensional, two-dimensional, three-dimensional. And the first project is really just to get them used to using a game in class. A lot of management stuff, you know, they have to learn my rules and go over stuff like Like I said, it deals with scale factor as well. This snowman there that you just saw, he's going to multiply that by a scale factor of two eventually. It's going to be a lot of building. Same thing there. Difficult to see with the video, but that's, I blame that on the computer I have to use, so I don't want to slow it. I don't want to crash the system by using a high-quality recorder. But from this one project, my students are learning about four standards for math. In addition to those four math standards, they've got their research standards, which correspond with the English Language Arts. And even more important, and I think most important of anything that they learn in my class, they are being held accountable for their own learning. This isn't a class where I stand up like this and talk for 60 minutes. This is a class where I talk for five or 10 minutes and I say, this is what I want you to learn? Go learn. If you have a question, you know, I'll be your guide, I'll help you, I'll answer your questions, but I want you to learn this on your own. And it's a very powerful thing that not a lot of students realize they're capable of until they, you know, I hold over their head, hey, by the way, if you learn this, you get to play Minecraft. So, some pretty cool stuff. My eighth graders today, these are, those of you familiar with eighth-grade math, these are function machines. So, they were building function machines. This is a pretty basic build here. Again, learning input-output, and if you're familiar with function machines, something goes in, something unique comes out after something happens, put on the inside. So, really just a visual representation of the function machine and something that I know where, you know, in 12th grade, when my eighth graders are in 12th grade, maybe they're learning about functions, I can almost guarantee you the first thing they'll think of is this function that they built in Minecraft. And hopefully, the visual representation serves as a reminder of how functions work and how you can use these. And then I'll show one more quick video here.
So, you created the standards that go with this? Is that what you did?
I did not create the standards. I aligned the standards that are already in existence with my class. Yeah, so, everything that we do in my class is a direct correlation to the standard. And like I said, that's so, if a parent calls me and says, hey, my student built SpongeBob SquarePants in your class today, what in the world they're doing? Well, then I can pull out my standards and say, well, what they're going to do with that SpongeBob is first you're going to cut it into thirds and then they're going to multiply by a scale factor of four. And then right after that, we might take that 3D SpongeBob and put it into a two-dimensional shape. And so, they're aligned with the state standards, are the common core for math.
Since it's a connection class, all the kids do not go through this, so is this just enhancing their regular math classes?
This is enhancing their regular math class. I have about, between 15 and 20 projects, and the way I've tried to do it is a couple of the projects each quarter will reinforce what they've learned in their math. A couple of the other projects will maybe preview what they're going to learn. Like right now, my sixth graders are building coordinate planes and number lines. Well, that's something they covered at the beginning of sixth grade, so they're really good at it. Beginning of the year, I did the same project for my sixth graders who hadn't looked at that stuff since fifth grade. Well, they struggled a lot with it. We'll do ratios for my next project, which is something that neither grade level will be very familiar with because they haven't quite yet delved deep into it. So, a little bit of previewing and a little bit of review, but like I said, some standards we delve really deep into, other standards we just sort of scratch the surface and they knew them already.
Do you target certain kids or is it just a random thing that they happen in in their connections class?
It's random. It's random choosing for the class. The research phase itself is where any differentiation that I think meets occurs. If I see, for instance, if I have an English language learner, a lot of times what I'll do, instead of giving them 20 words and saying, here, go write 700 words about this, maybe I'll give them a picture and say, I want you to write everything you know about this picture down. Or if they're really bad, I'll say, don't type this in English, type this in Spanish and you know, use translators. But the class itself focuses on everybody. From the data I've looked at, it's most useful for the middle. It focuses everybody in the class. It's not like I take the students, it's all...
I would say that it would be almost a prerequisite, especially for those that can detect math and track.
Yeah. I mean, do you mean prerequisite for...
Well, I was going to say for all the, you know, the kids that are really going to go into math and are taking the AP math course to get asked to, I would say that would be almost a necessity, that what you're doing.
I agree, because it does help students visualize math where, in a completely different way, instead of, you know, instead of calculating the volume of a fictional house that they're reading the word on, where I can say, go build a castle, find the volume, you can figure out the formula on your own. And if you can't, by the way, volume is cube unit, so fill your castle up with cubes and count. And so, it really is, it's a neat thing and it's not something that students get to see often. So, it does help for those higher-level math courses.
Yeah, that's really interesting, but I got to wonder, what's next?
For the class?
Are you thinking of something else? I mean, discussing...
Another game?
Another game or another package or something?
Well, you know, when I created the class, I told the admin at Alamo, it's incredible to let me do this. I told them that it's combining my two passions, teaching and gaming. So, I did Minecraft at first because it's the most popular. That doesn't mean I don't have a gazillion ideas about other games that are out. So, yeah, absolutely. But Minecraft is...
Well, it's what the kids, that keeps them involved and engaged.
Right, and engaging is half the battle. When students see, I always ask, I say, what have you heard about this class? And everybody raised their hand, we play Minecraft. So, I try to reinforce, well, yes, we play Minecraft, but what I like to say is we're playing math with Minecraft. So, it's cool and out of the difference, but it does help me to sort of...
That's fascinating. That's great. That is just wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Makes me look at...
Yeah.
I know it. No Minecraft up here.
I've never played it. I don't know how to play it.
I have.
I'm going to try it out tonight.
That is very personal.
Now, we'll just wait. How about that?
Do something different, you know?
Okay, next we have our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Motion by Tom and a second by Nancy. All in favor? Unanimous. Public participation, I don't believe there's any tonight, so we have presentation and discussion items. Mr. Dan Jones with our finance report.
I wish I had a game to play so we could...
Make it more fun.
I think you play a game every month, Dan.
There's one going on account of...I wonder who's going to give the money.
Yeah, well, this is for the month ending December 31st, 2013. It's our sixth month of our fiscal year, so everything should be about 50% if we spend it all equally. You'll see that in the budget comparison here in a minute. Well, we started the month with $94,103,000. Our receipts for the month were $25,296,000. And our expenses were $14,431 for accounts payable and $11 million in payroll. A total of $25,435,000, leaving us cash in the bank of $93,964,000. And that is almost $1 million more than this time last year, $907,000 to be exact. Our budget comparison, you can see that revenues were 68%, so we're more than 50%. And I'll show you where most of that is in just a second. And you can see overall, our expenses were right at 50%, right where we should be. You can see most areas are right there or a little bit under. So, we're doing well on the expense side and our revenues are a little bit higher. Abolom taxes, it's property tax, we're almost 93%. And that's good. I like to see that at this time of the year. That'll slowly come in and will probably be 97, 98% by the time we finish this year, which is, that's pretty good. And you can see real estate transfer, we're already at 75%. So, that's generated when property changes hands. So, that we're probably going to make our budgeted projection there. And the other areas, you can scroll through and look at them as you need to and see where they are. Again, the list of the checks for the month, we can get you any information that you need on them. Schools, we've got all schools reported this month and in all the accounts, there's, when you add them together, $6,324,000. Sales tax. Sales tax, we collected $2,649,000, which is 5.75% more than last month and almost 5% better than the same period last year.
That's good.
And this month, we did get a pro-rata distribution and this comes from the state of, they've got money that they don't know what to do with and they just divide it up once about every quarter. And we earned $6,495 that they guess is ours, they're just not sure.
Terrific.
This money is invested. We have it in the LGIP at the state. We earn $1,613 in interest and there's currently $18,798 in that account. And to give you a picture of how it looks, it's pretty flat. It just sort of meanders up and down a little bit each month. Hopefully, we'll get another spike because the next one we get will be for December and I'd like to think that maybe we did a little better in December. The '07 bond money is still invested. We earned $721 and there's $7,296,000 there. The '05, we earned $293 and there's $2,971,000. And these are the two that we've got obligated for that Brandywine Elementary. Capital outlay, you can see the five and the seven bond money and you can see that there's really nothing available for projects. Debt service. We've got the Splosh account that I just told you about and also our debt service account. So, there's a total of $39,500,000. And as of February 1st, I'll have to make a payment of $17,584,000 on bonds. So, we'll take about half of this to make those payments, but the money's there and that's what it's for, so we're glad to have it. Any questions that I can answer? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dan, have you done any analysis on the money that they're projecting in the budget, how that's going to affect us?
As a matter of fact, we have taken a look at that and I think there was about $341 million that goes to reduce austerity. And just taking, we don't have the statewide FTE counts that I can get a dollar using the exact, but using the data that I do have, which is FY14 allotment sheets, we'll get a little over $7 million toward our austerity reduction.
Oh, okay.
We will still have a $15 million reduction, but that's about what we will, somewhere in that neighborhood.
But we probably shouldn't spend it until we know we got it, right?
Well, that's true. But the good thing is, right now, the $150 per person per month for non-certified health insurance, right now they're saying they're going to waive that, so we won't have it.
That'll be nice.
So, that saves us over $2 million right there.
That's great.
So, if that goes through, that'd be great.
Are we going to get any of the growth money? That $101 billion enrollment growth?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
That comes in form of midterm.
Yeah, that is in midterm. So, we should get at least what we got this year in midterm.
Okay, so it's been a happy day in your office, right?
Oh, yeah, that was good news. Yeah, I told Dr. Evans that that's the best news we've had in four or five years. Usually, it's the opposite way.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next we have future agenda items. Does anybody have anything they need to add? No? Okay, and then we move to action items and that would be Mr. Dan Jones for the, and Brad for the underwriting.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to let me and Dan present this action item to you tonight, which is, as you've seen, RFP P1402, which is solicitation that we've recently sent out and evaluated and bringing to your attention tonight for bond underwriting services, which is part of the next step in our process for bond acquisition this year. This solicitation, we released in December. We sent it to four known bond underwriting companies. We received five responses. An evaluation committee went through each offer against the terms and specifications that we had in the document. And as you can see from this tab sheet, it was pretty tight. Citigroup was the highest-scoring responsive and responsive offer that we received. If you recall, see, this is the same organization that we worked with on the series 2013 refunding. It's my understanding that it's the same personnel as well that will be working with Dan and his staff, so there's some familiarity there and a recent track record of good service and effective performance as well. So, it would be our recommendation to award, or ask for the award of Contract P1402 to Citigroup Global Markets.
It is recommended that the Forsyth County Board of Education accept the recommendation from Citigroup to be the underwriters for the bond as recommended.
Do I have a motion to accept?
No move.
Second.
A motion by Nancy and a second by Kristen. Discussion questions?
Is the difference in that impaired the amount of money that they were going to charge per, was that basically the difference?
Primarily, they both scored the same in non-cost.
Right.
In this particular RFP, we had 60% to non-cost elements, which made up the vendor qualifications and then there's methodologies that were made up, their scope of work of how they would actually perform, and we evaluated those. Both of those companies scored the same on that. So, the difference that you see in the 99.4 and the 98.8 are reflected in a weighted difference between their, the cost and the expense of it.
Right. I just wanted to compare it down to one prior to this one, and we got good service from them, but I felt it was probably the cost that was the difference.
Yes, ma'am. On the cost portion, you can see...
About a $4,000 difference.
It's tied.
Right there, yeah.
These companies are major players in this world. They go head-to-head with each other on a regular basis. They kind of have a good idea where the other person's going to come in based on competition at the time and it's reflected in how close these are among the three scores. And as you see, we do a weighted proportion relative to their, against the low in coming up with those points.
Can you give us just a minute? Can you give us just a minute summary of what non-cost means and what cost means?
Sure. Um, within the R, within the RFP, we evaluated, as you see on this, it's broken into two, these are two big sections, but within this, there are several, several subheadings, I didn't type, type them all out. Um, under vendor qualifications, we look at things such as, um, the organization as a whole, we ask for resumes of the, of the staff that will be servicing us, uh, we look at their legal standing, if, if, or any filings with the SEC and things like that. We look at experience, particularly looking at experience within, uh, the bond markets for K-12, and even deeper than that, K-12 within the state of Georgia. So that, we try to get a, a profile of the, are they qualified to do the work? And most people that are gonna respond to this type of thing are qualified, at least in real close degrees. There's some differences that, that you'll see reflected in some scores. The second part of the non-cost scoring is scope of work, and what, and what, what this entails is we asked for their, for how they would, we asked for them to detail how they would, um, their different methodologies as far as how they would market the bonds, how they would sell the bonds. We asked for their, for them to give us a, a timeline on how they would respond to us, just a, a total scope of work, in other words, from, from the day, let's say, from the day you received the award, how would you play this out?
Their game plan.
Their game plan, and, and so, some of them did, uh, outstanding, particularly, uh, Baird and Citigroup, it, like, giving projections on a, if the economy is this, it's gonna look like this, if the market stays like this. Some even pulled our current, uh, data and plugged it in the spreadsheets and showed those. So we're, we're trying to evaluate, not just are they capable, but what is your methods? And what are you offering us that you'll bring to the table? And it's, as you see, it's, it's a lot of data that, that they, they bring us, most of this is, is their scope of work and their methodology. So those two things combined weighted for sixty non-cost points, and cost was forty points. If that answered the-
Yes, it did. That gives me a better understanding of it. Okay, any, any other questions? Do I have a, um, oh, we just spoke now, don't we? All in favor? It's unanimous. Alrighty, thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Okay, and our other action item is, um, the board goals, and I think y'all have a copy, I'll just read them off, we, these are what we discussed, um, at our retreat last week. Ongoing Board of Education professional development, we discussed, um, trying to better ourselves and, and maybe get out and see some school systems in the region that we are comparative to, to, uh, start trying to reach above what we've been, I think. Plan future capital outlay funding requirements to include priorities, timelines and desired levels, incorporating information from the district strategic plan as well as the Georgia Department of Education local facilities plan. And then, of course, number three is our two thousand fourteen bond referendum, which is so important to all of us, I think. Uh, number four, maintain and leverage school and community connections through participation in community and school events. Uh, number five, plan for leadership development and continuity among the Board of Education and district school-level leadership positions. Six is evaluation of human capital management to maximize capacity in Forsyth County schools. And then seven is the one, um, that we added, it just has a list of some of the things that we all try to attend when we have time. Ongoing opportunities for representing the Board of Education at school and community functions, and it's just a list of, of the, um, of most of the functions that we all go to anyway, just kind of spelled out. So, um, do I have a, a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Ann?
Second.
And a second by Tom? Okay, is there any discussion? Anybody wanna add anything to that?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is on our professional development, I know we had a good bit of discussion about trying to seek out some flexibility for us, because we're finding out that the standard stock training out there is not for us, because we're in a different place in the county. So we're gonna s- seek that as well as a part of that one, to, to see if we can find that professional development that'll help us grow as a board for what we need here in Forsyth.
Like our diversity training that we've been doing for ourselves?
Yeah. And make it count toward that mandated, mandated training. You know, we always seek out those mandated things that we can get flexibility from to do the right thing. And in that area, we talked about doing that for ourselves, not just our system. So, um, that's the only thing I'll add to that one.
Okay, Ann did get some information, do you wanna share that?
Well, it was in relation to the GSBA dis- board of distinctions and how the next step that we would go to after we were quality board requires that we take three extra, three of us take three extra hours of education in some form. So my question to them was, could we, does it have to be, um, what is aligned with the GSBA, learning the school board U and their, the things that they offer? And the answer was no, that, but it had to be approved by the state. So that cut out a lot of things that we would want to pursue, like the diversity training is, is certainly, in essence, should count for what we're trying to do, which is improve our understanding of our jobs in our community. So, um, I think, I think the next step is, um, there is a retreat in March that I'm gonna raise the issue with GSBA that why does it have to be in relation to what the state approves? Why can't those boards, like ours, that are looking for a higher level or some other input, be not allowed? If we can present it to GSBA, say, this is our plan, and have it approved by them, why we can't use that in lieu of the other? Because, I mean, even if you look at the narrow, it's, what good is it? No, it's not just us, but you're talking City Decatur, all the metro areas, it's very limited. So I don't think that that's, that should be the parameter they use.
So you will let us know?
Yeah, I'll bring it up at the retreat that we have.
Okay.
Thanks.
So all in favor of accepting these board goals for two thousand fourteen? Okay, unanimous? All right, and next we have points of information with Dr. Evans.
Actually don't have any one particular item to point out, I just do wanna just make mention, 'cause a lot, a lot of times we talk about points of information, only pick one or two, but the types of things that are included in our board's points of information, information include fundraisers that are approved, overnight field trips, uh, attendance report, as, that is tracked month by month throughout the year, um, even work orders that are being reported throughout the district, um, as well as such things as our extension service activity report. So when we talk about points of information, oftentimes we don't pick every one of them to talk about, but those are the kind of things that the board is looking at, even though you are not required to take official action on them throughout the month. There are things that, that are part of the board's scope of, of overview. So just wanted to bring that up as we mentioned points of information tonight.
Do I have a motion that we go into exec- executive session for a personnel issue?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Ann and a second by Tom, all in favor? Alrighty.